This conference will now be recorded.
Um, do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You may be seated and I would take a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
And also.
Sean and Maggie, first and second, um, any discussion? Hearing none. Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce? You can't hear yet. Give me a thumbs up. Okay. Um, Rick?
Aye.
And Jurick votes aye. All right, the first item on the agenda, it looks like Mr. Cavett with the project schedule on Main Street.
Aye.
There you go. But he left.
Okay, well, um, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, um, it's obvious if you haven't seen already, the project detour went up this morning. Contractor was out doing saw cutting and getting ready for removal starting tomorrow. But back up a little bit, um, just to give you a little history on the, the schedule, um, we met with the contractor back in mid-March and at that time they were looking at the historic temperatures for, um, April nighttime temperatures when they would get below freezing, basically with concerns about the temporary water services freezing overnight. So at that time they were projecting basically a late, late April start date. And when we went into the neighborhood meetings, uh, open, uh, public meetings there in, uh, eighteenth of March, that's what we presented to the business owners, that we were looking at a late April start. Then the next day they decided, the contractor having looked at, uh, long-term forecast, decided, uh, it was within their best interest to move things up. And so contrary to what we presented, they everybody were looking basically at the project starting about, good solid two weeks sooner than originally was advertised. I don't think most people probably are going to complain, um, especially when we see the nice weather like this and sooner we get it going, the sooner we get it done, so. So that's kind of where things were at on schedule, um, give you an idea what's, what's planned going forward here, um. They should start, they've got, uh, planning to start my removals tomorrow. They were out doing a lot of saw cutting today, uh, where the removals will take place. Um, and, uh, contrary to kind of maybe what, what we were originally thinking is they'll actually be doing a removal, starting on the high end and working their way back towards Second Avenue. So they're going to actually start about the mid-block between Central Avenue and First Avenue Northeast. Uh, start at that point and then work their way back west. That way they can utilize the existing roadway as they remove it. So it'll cradle, make it a lot easier, be a lot less messy and a lot more efficient process. Um, the other thing that we had noted, um, in our notice that went out to the residents or the property owners, and probably they'll send out a quick notice tomorrow is, um, contractor actually, contrary to what we had imagined they were going to do, they're actually going to remove all of the sidewalk and place pedestrian mats down. And there's some, there is some reasoning and benefit to that. Uh, the only issue is it was a little bit contrary to what we had imagined would be done. Um, it'll actually add a pretty much a much more efficient process to the removal and keeping pedestrian temporary access open and things like that. So as soon as they remove that sidewalk, they'll be doing a little leveling and placing those rubber mats down so that pedestrian access can be maintained. Um, beginning the week of the twelfth, uh, next week, um, they do anticipate starting their first utility crew, which will be putting the sanitary sewer main in and they'll start at the west end at Second Avenue and start working their way east. Um, the following week, the week of the, uh, the nineteenth, the second utility crew will come in and they would start on Water Main, again, at Second Avenue Northwest and work their way east. Um, at that point, uh, once the, uh, sanitary sewer contractor starts to get ahead, uh, further east, uh, you'll see more removals happening, going further east up to, uh, basically the Columbus Avenue intersection. So there will definitely be a good chunk of the, the project that will be all under construction in some phase or another. Um, I think that's kind of hit in a nutshell. The other, some of the things to highlight, the, uh, I wasn't around this week, some, or today, so I was a little bit offline, but they got a little updates from the guys. Um, I know there was some concerns about the ramp, ramping that was over the temporary water lines. Um, as I understand, they've gone back and are looking at something better than gravel so that area can be, can be maintained better and utilized better. Um, the other thing that's a little, caused a little bit of confusion is, uh, the west end of the project had to be closed off as well. Uh, basically it was so they can complete that flatwork, that sidewalk work. Uh, that closure will only be for about a, probably be for about a month. Uh, once these flatwork starts, the sidewalk work starts, we're probably looking at less than two weeks to have that completed. And then to have that, uh, basically what we call a partial opening or opening, local access opening on that west end. Uh, traffic will be able to work their way into like, uh, uh, Second Avenue Southwest uh, and access all those local businesses. Obviously the detour will still continue around, but again, it'll access into, into the downtown, uh, on that first stretch into the west end will be uh, basically back at what we call a soft closure in about a month. Um, and I haven't heard any latest, uh, again, they were thinking probably the week of the nineteenth, they'd be starting concrete flatwork again, that's really based on ground temperatures and air temperatures at night. Um, if things look more promising, they probably will look, getting in there even sooner if the long-term temperatures are better. Um, I guess that's all I have. I mean, maybe some of you have gotten comments or questions and, uh, I guess let me know if there are any of those.
I do, Mr. Mayor, can I go first?
Yep, sure.
Um, I don't know what happened in that meeting today and, or what was said, um, about those mounds that went over. Um, like I told everybody, uh, if, if it's, is short-term, um, just go for it. But, um, today something was said in that meeting, um, and then they, they did come and cover it right away. But, uh, the general contractor for the entire job, um, he's not too happy about it and thinks he can treat people some pretty rough. Um, so I, I got an issue with that. I'll actually talk to Scott Griggs about it, uh, before I discuss it in public. Um, however, um, didn't, was it the whole problem? Was starting the job is they had to start at one end and work their way down because all the piping sticks together? I mean, didn't all this stuff get delayed? Why couldn't that have happened last year? Instead of starting at that, I don't understand. Now you're gonna, you've, you've, you've taken the shut off the whole Main Street. You had all the equipment coming in here, all these people are going by, um, for their detour and then they're bringing their heavy equipment in, so they gotta shut this down. So all these people wait until it builds all the way up. It just kind of back asswards and, and this sidewalk, wasn't that in the contract?
The, the contract requires them to maintain a temporary access, temporary, temporary pedestrian access route. And how they do that, there's, there's various means and methods to do that, um. Um, last year, if you saw, they did leave the sidewalk in until, um, um, kind of the last moment. They chunked out areas where they had to install cert water services and sewer services. And then they had to bridge over it or mat over those areas. So the, they're looking at a more efficient removal process where they're just going to remove it all and right behind that they'll put the temporary matting out. Um, again, the utility work will happen west to east. That is the, that is the order of, or of, of construction. The removals though, like I said, they're going to start at the high end and pull it back west so that they can drive over that existing roadway as they remove it behind them. And work their way to.
The whole idea, um, Chris, um, um, behind us delaying that project in the first place was because all the pipes had to fit together, but obviously that don't happen when, when the contractor doesn't want that to happen. Is that correct?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I'm following you, Rick, because they will pick up where they left off last year. And you always have to start at the low end and work your way, where the water flows to. So the storm sewer and the sanitary are down at Second Avenue and they've got to work their way from west to east as they build that, because that's the direction, you know, the flow is going towards the west. You always start at the low end and work your way towards the high end. So I don't think, I don't think there's any change in the order of construction. It's just that the order of the, the removals, and again, that will be, the removals will happen in a week.
If they removed it west to east, doing the removals, they would have to drive through residential property, residential areas to get back to what we call their boneyard, which is by, uh, Strike Forest Bowl. So this way they are, all their construction is staying on Main Street for the removal process, which is what we want them to do. Uh, but when it comes to pipe work, they are starting west to east like Chris is saying.
Um, I have a couple of things. The dust control, I mentioned this to John in that one meeting. But if, if, uh, they can do dust control on the, um, on the road by that boneyard, but more than just water, if they could put down some calcium chloride and then maybe maintain it because, um, those neighborhoods really got blasted last year from a little bit, um, to the around there and to the north and to the south, so. Um, and then, uh, I got a, what was it? A, a concern was brought up to me about how narrow the highway is going to be. Um, from a business on the west end. And I know all this has been done before I got on the council, but I just, I told the property owner that I would note the concern at the meeting about, uh, the, uh, highway being narrowed and, and I basically told him that's the state, um, what the state wants and that's what I understand. Um, if I'm wrong, please tell me differently, but, um, that's the way I understand it. And then they mentioned about how the entrance into that, what is it, Mill Street, I think we're calling it now? Um,
Yep.
Got so narrowed and I said, well, you know, a lot of, for a lot of years that was, and I knew that working from, for the city back in the day, that was railroad property. And the city just basically put the roadway entrance in as wide as that road really is. Um, and I explained that to them and I think I'm somewhat correct, I hope.
That, that is correct.
Okay, so, um, I just wanted to bring that up and I don't know if you're going to have any more, but.
Yeah, yeah, real quick, couple of real quick comments, uh, regarding the dust control, we'll follow up, we'll check on that, um, the road width. Um, yeah, there was a pretty extensive process to get to where we were, we were at. Um, in fact, the DOT wanted it slightly narrower. Public Works, uh, New Prague Public Works wanted it, uh, a little bit wider and we compromised where we're at now for the width. And the width will actually be the same width as it is down on the east end, so down towards the funeral home. Which it sometimes feels narrow when there's a lot of cars parked, but if you'll notice as a driver, you will slow down in those circumstances, which is good traffic calming for safety reasons. Uh, yes, in the entrance to Mill Street, uh, we had looked at trying to acquire that property from the railroad and, uh, they were not very cooperative. They were not willing to sell it, uh, they offered to rent it at a, an exorbitant amount. And so basically we put that opening in to fit the, the width of the alley. Basically it's an alley right away through there, so.
Okay, thank you. This is Mike speaking. It should also be pointed out that all of that parking that exists adjacent to the railroad tracks by the meat market there, the city does not have a formal lease to be able to utilize that as parking. And so anybody that technically parks there is really parking there at their own risk, uh, not on a formal parking lot. Correct, correct. Any other questions for Mr. Cavett? Great, um, thank you.
Thank you.
And I walked the project this morning and they're giving her, they're, they're not, uh, wasting any time, so it's kind of.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot going on for the next, there's going to be a lot going on, yes, it's a pretty aggressive at this point.
So, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Cavett, um. Item number two, twenty twenty-one citywide cleanup event. Ken?
Yeah, I'll give you a quick rundown here. So the action item that we're really looking at is entering into a recycling program agreement. But, uh, before we get to that action item, I just wanted to give you a quick rundown of the twenty twenty-one citywide cleanup day. Uh, this year it will be on Saturday, May twenty-second and the state's determined by, uh, talking with Lakers and then, uh, also in this case, talking with the two other vendors that we have for, uh, document shredding, which is veterans shredding. And then also a new item this year that we're going to be providing recycling for, that was actually mandated by the county as part of the grant program. Uh, we had to offer mattress recycling or carpet recycling or furniture recycling. And, uh, the mattresses are kind of in the problem item in the area here. So we did get additional grant funding for, uh, mattress and box spring recycling. So again, everything will occur on, uh, May twenty-second, that's Saturday morning. Um, just like in twenty twenty, uh, we are doing a drop-off site only for the, uh, what we'll call general recycling and general refuse. Uh, we're moving it because of the, uh, commotion going on down at the, uh, former Creamery Lot uh, with the contractor for the Main Street project. We have moved the collection site over to the baseball field, um, Maripack Baseball Stadium by the old outdoor pool. That'll work pretty well for, uh, flow in and out of the area, kind of keep people away from Main Street. And, uh, that was kind of a preferred site from, uh, staff and then, uh, Lakers, um, uh, recycle, uh, trash collection as well. So that is where the site will be moving to. Um, as I mentioned, we'll, once again, do document shredding, um, same location at City Hall on the south side of the parking lot. Um, obviously, uh, we've directed the, uh, contractor and we'll alert people that, uh, with Main Street closed, they'll just have to enter and exit from, uh, Central Avenue to get in and out of that site. But nine to noon for the, um, document shredding. And then at the same time as well, from nine to noon, uh, the new item is mattress and box spring recycling. And that's going to take place up at the, uh, Public Works Building and Wastewater Treatment Site. Uh, since you'll drive, uh, in off of Twelfth Street and, uh, kind of make a loop into, uh, we'll, they'll have a big semi truck where they'll be collecting the, uh, mattresses and box springs. And really how that mattress and box spring recycling will work is the grant is only writing down the cost of the, um, normal cost to recycle a mattress or box spring from twenty-five dollars a box, uh, or mattress down to twenty, uh, dollars per, uh, item. Now, we had to estimate a little bit with the vendor on how many we think we might get, so we estimated at a hundred items. We don't know if we'll be way above or way below that, but, um, that's what our grant will cover, uh, for the cost of doing that. We'll get a good baseline hopefully this year and how many we do get. And the county plans to continue to fund that, uh, into the future. Um, other than that, the program is really as it operated last year. And, um, as always, uh, if you took a look in the packet, this is not the final version of the, uh, program recycling agreement, but it is basically other than filling in the dates and the uh, final dollar amount, which I worked with Scott County to get this basically a draft version, but it'll be this format. And we'll get a signed copy from, uh, the county that we can execute and we expect that within the next couple of weeks. So this is kind of how that process is going every year, uh, that we've done this program. But everything should be in order and we plan to get everything advertised here, uh, fully with the May, um, utility bill that'll be going out here in mid-April. So kind of time, time critical to get the information out there. So if you have any questions, I can stand for those, but we're excited to offer the, the mattress recycling. I think, I think that'll be a popular one this year.
Yeah, I'm excited too for that. Why wasn't that with the other, like over by the garbage or?
So they needed to bring in a semi truck.
Uh-huh.
Uh, they just needed more room and not knowing how many people were going to have into and out of the area and talking to both Lakers and certified recycling, uh, they felt we should keep those separate till we have, uh, a little bit of a baseline and know what we're going to have for traffic and demand. So, so that was kind of the reason.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I do, um, so can the, the recycling program agreement with Scott County, um, you're not anticipating any material changes to that contract, are you?
There will not be any, nope. Just basically I tried to fill in with the staff at Scott County on the items that would change. It's basically the, uh, dollar amount at two thousand three hundred and five dollars and eighty-nine cents, which we kind of filled in, but we were just working off the last year's agreement. And then, um, really the date for our cleanup event. So those are really the only two items that, that were modified. And they said, no, they did not anticipate changing the agreement in any other fashion.
Okay, okay, yeah, usually, you know, with the county government, sometimes state statute comes into play. And so I wasn't sure if there would be any changes to that, so.
Nope.
Thank you.
They were supposed to have the final version to me and they didn't and that's kind of how it happens every year, so.
Okay.
We just needed to get it out because we're out of time to get it in the newsletter, so.
Okay, any other questions in regards to the spring cleanup? Otherwise I'd take a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement, uh, or for the city to enter into the agreement as long as there are no material changes to it.
Hey, give me the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Bruce made a second. Yep.
Did you hear me?
Yes, we can, Bruce. Can you hear us? You, you kind of cut in and out a little bit, just to see.
Most definitely.
Okay, um, hearing no other discussion, all in favor say aye. Sean?
Aye. Are you, you guys do?
Aye.
Um, Bruce? If you're, if you're, okay, Bruce votes aye. Um, Rick?
Aye.
And Jurick votes aye. Um, motion carried unanimously.
Aye.
There, there you go.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. So.
Bruce, it almost seems like your, your audios might be on a time delay.
Yeah, big time, something.
About thirteen seconds delayed.
Okay, um, number three, the adoption of ordinance number three twenty-one. Ken, you're up again.
Yep, well, just do a quick PowerPoint run-through of, of how we got to this point. Uh, so again, this item for the indoor firing ranges was something that, uh, was brought up from an inquiry on a potential business venture, uh, to have an indoor firing range in the city. Um, staff reviewed this and determined that we did not have adequate zoning ordinance, uh, provisions to address safety issues and other concerns associated with the, uh, potential indoor firing range. Planning Commission reviewed, uh, during January and February, uh, ultimately did have a public hearing and we did not get any, uh, public comments other than from the applicant, um, or potential applicant, I should, uh, point out. Um, city council did introduce the item at the, um, March fifteenth meeting. And at that meeting, the council specifically had a couple of, uh, changes to make to the amendment uh, for the zoning ordinance, including a typo in the definition of the indoor firing ranges, which we did clean up. And then also removed, uh, one of the standard items, number C, from, uh, performance standard number seven that, uh, was wiped out, which was relating to providing a photocopy of, uh, what was, uh, written in there as the permit to carry a dangerous weapon. And that was struck completely out of the proposed ordinance. So hopefully what we've got in front of you tonight addresses all the concerns introduction on the March fifteenth meeting. And, uh, one other thing we talked about at the meeting was the additional information the council was requesting about the MPC noise regulations. And I did include that in the packet and basically that just outlines what the MPCA, and that's what we follow for our noise rules, is that you measure the, uh, noise level at the area of the receiver. So let's say for example, the gun range, uh, was deemed to be loud at a residential home, you know, nearby, you would measure that sound level at the residential home, not at the, um, place making the noise. So that's just how all of our noise ordinances, uh, work. I also wanted to note that I did talk with the, uh, community development director and assistant community development director at the city of Burnsville. They have two indoor firing ranges up in the city of Burnsville. Uh, one has been there a number of years and, uh, really predated their current ordinance. However, they did not know of any, uh, noise or other safety-related concerns. Uh, also talked to their code enforcement, uh, staff as well. And then the newer one, the modern sportsman, um, they did have, uh, new regulations in place when that was approved. They also noted they had not had any concerns with that and all they do in Burnsville is simply follow the MPC noise rules. And, uh, they have not had any concerns, uh, in that, uh, with that new venture as well. So, um, that was the background, I think, that we had, uh, requested be covered at tonight's meeting, uh, for follow-up. So with that, I won't run through everything again, but again, it was adding a definition for an indoor firing range and then adding a set of performance standards as, uh, this would be considered only as a conditional use in the Iowa Light Industrial Zoning District, which could include the city and its industrial land, but it also include any other industrial land, which is generally in that same area near chart or, uh, the existing business park as well. So again, our indoor firing ranges, uh, performance standards, um, I'm not going to read through them here, but, um, specifically I'll point out on number seven here on the screen, we removed, uh, item C, that was about that, uh, permit to, uh, have a dangerous weapon. So that was struck and I think that was the major concern in the, uh, proposed amendment for the council. So again, everything else had remained the same from the introduction back on March fifteenth. And again, it was just a total of seventeen and these, again, related to noise, uh, operations and safety type issues, uh, locking guns at night, uh, having a, uh, gun range, uh, firearm and structure on-site at all times, uh, that type of thing. Then just a couple of photos here of different layouts of, of gun ranges and backstops and they have to obviously meet all the MPCA, PCA, uh, for lead containment. And then obviously we talked about our, uh, MPC noise, uh, regulations as well. So with that, uh, the planning commission and staff still continue to recommend adoption of the ordinance and we recommend the second reading and adoption of the ordinance be considered for, uh, the meeting tonight.
So any questions? If there aren't any, I would, uh, I would, uh, entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number three twenty-one.
So moved.
In the second reading. Is there a? And Sean seconded. Maggie made the first, Sean seconded it. Any other discussion? I hope it gets built. I look forward to using it. I really do. Um, all in favor say aye. Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye, aye.
Yep, now you're closer. Um, Rick?
Aye.
And Jurick votes aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is approve the hiring of wastewater treatment facility operator number one. Matt?
Uh, Mayor, City Council, in front of you, we are, uh, looking to fill the wastewater one position that became available after Robert Brazina took a position with the New Prague Utilities as a generation operator. On February eleventh, we started, uh, advertising the wastewater one position, the New Prague Times and several other related, uh, organizations uh, with a closing date of February twenty-sixth. Uh, we received thirteen applicants. After reviewing the applicants and using a training and, uh, experience point system, uh, six applicants were interviewed. Uh, we did a second round of interviews with the final three applicants. Uh, upon, uh, completion of the second round of interviews, uh, it would, uh, our recommendation is to offer the position to Ray Niedemeyer as a wastewater one, uh, position. Uh, Mr. Niedemeyer is currently. as a wastewater one uh, position, uh, Mr. Niedemeyer is currently a resident in New Prague. He worked for Skyline Exhibits for thirty-plus years, uh, where he was in charge of maintaining and troubleshooting warehouse equipment and also performed safety uh, quality inspections. Yeah, he has a strong mechanical background, uh, Mr. Niedemeyer would be required to get a Class D water license within twenty-four months. Uh, it should also be noted that I have not received his drug test uh, results back, which I should get that tomorrow. Uh, so it's staff's recommendation that the Mayor, City Council appoint Ray Niedemeyer as the wastewater, as a wastewater one operator, um, effective April twenty-seventh and a starting wage of twenty-nine seventy-three per hour. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Anybody have any questions? Otherwise, I would take a motion to approve Ray Niedemeyer for the wastewater treatment plant operator.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ray Niedemeyer, subject to um, the successful passing of his uh, test that's pending.
Okay, is there a second to Maggie's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Sean seconded it, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Uh, Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
And Jerry votes aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next on the agenda is Fast Track Challenge presentation with Joe Faust, Ms. Faust.
Good evening, I'm Joe Faust, I'm the Business Development Specialist with the Scott County CDA, and I appreciate the opportunity to be on your city council agenda this evening to share information with you on our fifth annual Scott County Fast Track Challenge, which is coming up on October twenty-first of this year. Um, for those of you not familiar with the event, it is a Shark Tank type business challenge that is held in October of each year. The businesses that are eligible include um, any business that is currently located or is willing to locate in Scott County. And with that geographic boundary, we do include all of New Prague on both sides of Main Street. I'm also a business that has incorporated within the past five years. Um, in previous challenges, we had three years, this year we're expanding that to five years, or if there's a new product that is being developed. And then also a viable product or service um, that is being presented. Um, applications are being accepted at this time until August thirty-first, and it is a simple one-page application that can be completed online at our website, and that's scottcountyfasttrack.com. Um, the applicants as well as the winners have many benefits, they have um, media exposure, opportunities for networking. Uh, the winners are competing for a prize package that includes free um, professional services as well as startup cash. And those professional services are donated by generous sponsors, um, including Larkin Hoffman Law Firm, Neon Lizard Creative Design, the Scott County CDA, Prior Lakes Technology Village, and um, several chambers of commerce, including um, New Prague Chamber of Commerce, which has been a longstanding sponsor for the event. And we are currently looking for more sponsors, so our ask to you and to the business community is if you have um, a service or cash that you'd like to donate, pay it forward, help a young uh, business get on that road to success, um, please contact me or reach out on our website and let us know what you'd be willing to donate. Um, we have an ask for the city council this evening as well, and you've been very generous in the past on helping us socialize this through social media as well as through through your Chamber of Commerce, um, we're requesting that you continue to do that this year. And this year we'd like um, the mayor to consider whether you would donate um, one hour of your time for each applicant from New Prague that applies, we're hoping in the future um, to have each community pick the best of their best applicants to have an automatic submitted to the finalists. So each year we have a number of applications, our Board of Director narrows it down to the top five, and then they do a live pitch to a panel of judges and um, three winners are selected. Um, New Prague has been very successful in this process in the past, um, the twenty twenty winner was Your Works Automotive Specialists of New Prague um, with first place, and the previous year, um, Farmhouse Market captured second place in the competition. Um, also last year we did a student spotlight, and again, New Prague was represented well, um, with Slimy Unicorn. Um, Liz and Sophie Beazak were the two teenage gals that presented their uh, Slimy Unicorn um, children slime that they sell at um, various farmers markets, so this year we're expanding for the fifth um, annual event, and we're going to do a student competition and invite students from around the county to compete against one another with the hopes that um, the top um, place would um, go on to the live event on October twenty-first. So if there are any businesses out there that are interested, encourage you to apply online, again, a simple application. We have um, volunteers on board to help fine-tune the business plan as well as help pair a practice pitch for the live event if selected. So I would um, love to continue to share all the benefits and information, I think it's probably um, more impactful if we hear from past participants. So at this time, Ken, if you wanna uh, share our two-and-a-half minute video, you can hear from some of the companies that have participated in the past. And I'm not sure if um, there's audio.
Good to go.
Okay.
Fast Track is like a mini pitch competition, I mean, literally you're able to go in and and um, provide video, tell your story.
Fill out the application, tell your story, practice, get feedback, and then the actual competition.
That was absolutely invaluable, not not just for the competition itself, but just as a way to hone what our pitch is.
Applying for the Fast Track Challenge, it's a bit of a no-brainer, I mean, you have nothing to lose and a lot to gain, the resources that they provide are key.
The resources.
The resources, like the office that we now sit in today because of that challenge.
Financial, legal, marketing, everything you need in a startup business.
I would encourage any young company to consider applying, um, entering the competition.
Because it gives you a great opportunity to develop your business plan, to meet with a group of people that really care and are really concerned with your success. I've had several businesses in the past, and I wish I would have had these opportunities back then, it could have made that journey uh, much easier. Having this kind of feedback and knowledge and expertise.
Even if we hadn't won, I would still never regret having been part of the process because good people came, sat around the table, listened to us, practiced our pitch, gave us feedback and helped us zero in on what our brand promise should be.
Like, I keep going back to the people, because the people and ideas and the feedback you get is invaluable.
There's valuable advising happening here in Scott County, and you can connect to it through the Fast Track Challenge.
Anything to get exposure, experience, it it just, and the mentorship, I mean, you just can never have too many people helping.
So with that, just wanted to thank you for your pass support and again, ask you to continue to support and encourage your um, young businesses to apply for the challenge and receive mentorship and assistance to help them succeed, um, I'm happy to answer any questions to my cap.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next on, next on the agenda, we have uh, the consent agenda. With that, I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, move.
Rick moved, there's a second.
I'll second.
Maggie seconds. Any other discussion?
I could uh, just make a couple of comments on the memorial parade.
Sure.
Um. When I presented my memo, it was the standard memo that we do every year, it was before the construction decided to start early, so uh, first caveat would be uh, more than likely I will not be looking to the state to get a permit for Main Street, that we will use a local route, uh, Central, maybe Second, Columbus, over to the park. Um, and in that event, I would not get a, an insurance waiver for the state then, because we're just crossing over the state. Um, so I just wanted to share that, that we'll work with uh, with the American Legion on setting up the route. Um, but uh, it probably will not travel on Main Street this year.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, Sean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Um, Maggie?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
Oh, you came through at the same time. Uh, Rick?
Aye.
And Jerry votes aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously on the consent agenda. All right, anything else, anybody have any miscellaneous? No miscellaneous? Well, if there's no miscellaneous, I'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sean moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
I think, I think I heard, I saw Bruce's lips move.
I think so too.
All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Enjoy the nice evening, thanks everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.